What is it?
Six o'clock.
May, whatever.
May ninth.
May ninth, six o'clock.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 11th meeting?
Oh, you have approval of agenda.
Oh.
I want to go first.
You want to approve, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kramer, second by Mr. Hughesby. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Let's see here. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th meeting?
So moved with the reflected changes. Zach.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And do we have any reports from the permission meetings on?
Yep, Madam Chair, Commissioners, just a quick update here. Before you, I included a letter that the city had sent off to the city of Stillwater. This is related to Washington County's Emergency Housing Services Building. I just wanted to provide this update to the Plan Commissioners, as I know several of you attended the open house or were here for the city council meeting where Washington County was just providing an update to the city council. But essentially, I'm not going to go through everything on here, but essentially just sending over to Stillwater Plan Commission of recommendations that if they approve that project, Washington County's Emergency Housing Services Building, that we'd recommend a few conditions or ask that a few conditions be included with that project. As a reminder, that that project's proposed by Washington County, so it's a Washington County project, but it's within the city of Stillwater, so it's not within our corporate boundary, but right on the edge of it, which is why there were questions, concerns, comments, not only from the city council, but also for residents. So just wanted to provide that update to the Plan Commission. A couple other things here, Madam Chair, if I may. Newsletter just went out here recently, not sure if it's hit all the mailboxes yet or not, but we've got on the first page an update on PFAS, I know that related drinking water, I know that's been in the news a lot here lately. So the good news is we are under the MCL's maximum contaminant level from the federal level and under their hazard index for now, which is enforceable, so it's great that we're under that. We are expecting to get a health advisory notice from the state, as we are over the state's levels, but I think it's most important to understand that we are under those enforceable levels at the federal level. The state's levels are non-enforceable, and so it's confusing even when engineers talk about it, of how everything's set up with the different federal and state levels, and you know, I understand it can be hard for residents to understand as well, but wanted to make sure that we're getting that information out here timely to residents related to PFAS. Additionally, finance director position, I think I reported at a previous Plan Commission meeting that we were looking for a finance director, and we have an individual here that hoping to recommend to the council on Tuesday and have that be approved, so we feel really good about that. A lot of great work went on behind the scenes with that to find and source that candidate, so we're excited about that. And then finally, another item that I touched on at a previous Plan Commission meeting was our Well Three project, proposed over by Memorial, so we're continuing to work, that's a federal grant that we have for that project, that's providing us with $1.5 million, and so a lot of work that's going on in the background with our legal and city engineer to make sure we comply with the federal grant requirements. That project was initially planned for construction in 2024, however, when our city engineer went out and talked to the well contractors, they're booked up this year, they're at capacity, and so we're looking at probably a 2025 project for that. You may ask, well, why didn't you go out for bids earlier? Which would be a great question. The challenge with that, though, is that we can't go out to bids until we get the clearance from the federal government to go out to bid, since we have that grant through the federal government, and so we're still going to be able to meet their timelines. I think we have five years for those grant funds to be able to utilize those, and so we're working in earnest on that in the background. And so those were the updates I wanted to provide here to the Plan Commission, and happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Anyone have any questions?
Not going on.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Visitor and public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission with questions or comments, excuse me, on issues that are not part of the regular agenda. Please limit the comments to three minutes in length.
Are or are not part of the regular agenda.
Yeah, they got tweaked.
Okay.
Thanks, people here report item on the agenda, so.
Okay. So, public hearing, do I have to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
You could just open.
Okay, open the public hearing. And we're reviewing the David Carpenter and Jennifer Doherty Conditional Use Permit request?
Yes, Madam Chair, I can make some comments, review the report briefly. The applicants which are here tonight have made the application for the conditional use permit. It's both for construction, it's for construction of a garage at 6320 Lookout Trail. It's for two conditional use permits, one to allow for placement to the structure in the front yard, and a second to exceed the allowable size, 1,200 square feet, for a total for an accessory building. The applicant has done a nice job with background material and with a detailed summary of their requests. One clarification on that, the driveway is long, but it's not 2,895 feet. That was a typo. It's 285 feet, so that was just a correction from taking that summary and putting it in the report. No issue with the comprehensive plan, this is areas designated for low-density residential. The properties zoned R2, a low and medium-density residential district. Couple things, the subject property is a little unique, it's a double frontage lot with access both to Pecan Avenue and the Lookout Trail. The accessory building section is specific in that accessory building should be in a rear yard. In this case, you have two frontages, you have two front yards, so anytime we deal with that situation, we have to do it through a conditional use permit. Don't see any real issues with that. You know, Julie, I believe, has provided some photographs, maybe you've been by the property, and again, I don't think it's going to look odd in that particular allocation that they proposed. It will meet the other setbacks, it'll meet the five-foot side yard setback. The accessory building will occupy 14.5% of the rear of the yard between the house and Pecan Avenue, again, in that front yard, but that's generally a rear yard standard, so again, it's a unique situation. There is an existing attached garage, it's a tuck-under garage, it's part of the house of 441 square feet. You know, other than the doors, there really is no outward appearance of that garage. The proposed accessory building is 980 square feet, total of 1,421 square feet. That exceeds the overall maximum of 1,200 square feet, but again, so much of that, or really all of the existing garage is really a part of the house and not really adding to the massing of the overall amount of accessory building. Survey, we had requested a survey for this, or at least the applicant was putting one together. That hasn't been forward to us yet as of this date, or at least that we have seen, and that we've made a condition that we would need to see that prior to the issuance of a building permit. We don't foresee any issue with any survey issues related to that. Setbacks, again, I talked about the provision, the 401.15B4, that talks about when you have the two parallel streets, both the street lines shall be front lines. Again, that I've discussed. Drangy till, there should be no issues with that, but we put our standard condition in related to having the city engineer take a look at that, and we'll look at that once the survey is forward to us. Went through the criteria, again, a unique situation, I think there's a good justification for issuance of these conditional use permits. When you look at the existing homes on either side of Pecan Avenue, the garage should not look out of place, there are houses that are forward also, just the way that area has developed traditionally. So again, I don't see neighborhood impact, there's really no traffic impact, again, the density of this is not changing, it's still a single-family home. So with that, we've added the seven conditions for your discussion tonight to make a recommendation, and the applicants are here if they have any thing they would like to add, or things that I may have missed in reviewing this. Any questions for me to do?
You guys have any questions?
Maybe this is a question for them, but 21G, I know there's giant trees in there, and we're saying none will be removed, but I think there's some butted up against the north edge of the existing slab, so I'm assuming those will have to be removed in order to build the building.
They've looked at that more specific than I have, but it's my understanding that no trees will be removed, but they may have better knowledge of it.
It's the west.
We do have to do landscape. Does it come back? Are or not? What's that? Do we have some trees?
We should have you come, well, let's wait.
Yeah, sorry.
Till we go through all the questions.
That was the only.
So we can pick you up on that.
That was the only internal, or this side of the question that I had, so.
I have a comment to make. I'm always the one that's looking at the plans, looking at dimensions and whatnot, and there's not enough information here. I mean, Barry's working on a survey, and that's great, but I'm always disappointed when you can't read the plans, there aren't any dimensions on the plan, and there's a sketch that I guess the homeowner made, which is, I mean, that's good, but none of the elevation plans, none of the architect plans, none of any of that stuff has any dimensions on it, and so I'm always disappointed by that.
Which dimensions are your?
There is a site plan with full dimensions on it, as far as setbacks, so.
The setbacks are on here.
Right.
But not, no. I said what I said, that's all I have, just a comment.
And the building plans also have dimensions, just.
No, they don't.
No. I'm looking at 24 by 25, so.
And to correct me if I'm wrong, City Planner Richards, you had confirmed with the applicant, I believe, the height of the garage.
Yes, I did talk to the architect about the height of the garage, and that is within the limitations of that. There is an upper dormer, I believe it faces to the south, and that, I question that in terms of height, and I believe that's at 18 feet, and 20 feet is allowed for that, so.
Scott, is this the plan you talked about that has the mentions on it?
Yes.
Can't be read. I can't read them.
Okay.
I don't know, I could see one 24 foot here, but the rest of it is, it's, I can't read it, and I'm not, I'm just making a comment.
True.
That's all.
It looks like their copies are legible, and.
They probably are. That looks legible, but this is what we got, and it's just all like covered with black marks wherever the dimensions might have been.
Where'd you get that?
I'm not, there's no reflection on you, just a comment, that's all it is, just a comment.
It's probably just the copy after copy after copy of it.
I'm sure that's what it is.
They were made in-house.
And if the Plan Commission ever has a question, you know, give Julie or myself a call in advance, we can get you a copy.
You know, I assume that we can rely on the plan that you talked about that has the dimensions on it, I just don't know where it came from, and Barry's survey isn't done yet, so that's all.
You know, typically, we don't have for residential situations require a survey, unless we really feel that we need it. Now, the applicants, I mean, there's been many conditional use permits in the past where we haven't required it, and in this particular case, applicant was willing to do it, but again, it took longer than what they anticipated, so.
And Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're working on getting a new City Hall copier. I think that will help out with some of the challenges you're facing here. So staff does a great job in putting these together, and again, we want to make sure that you're able to see everything, and it's legible, so we'll work on getting that fixed.
Just a comment?
Yep.
It's not that I have any questions or issues with what I perceive the dimensions to be, I just like to see plans that I can read, that's all.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is there a reason why the garage cannot have a habitable space upstairs?
Because that pushes this potentially into a two-family unit, which, again, it's zoned R2, but the applicant has indicated that they are not wanting that, and again, it's just limiting the density in that neighborhood.
And the other thing is the number five with no kitchen or bathroom, it would seem to me that a bathroom in, might be a, I don't know, might be a good thing for both for them, and resale and everything else, I mean, I.
You know, I guess there's not an issue with that, as long as you don't have a kitchen, it's not considered a dwelling unit, so, you know, we could fudge on that, the applicants have said they're not interested in it, but you could certainly discuss that with them.
No, no. And, but they could do that, but they'd have to get more permitting if they did, made it into a, put in a kitchen and things of that nature.
Right, right.
Okay.
Again, that enters into more of a building code issues, whether it's haveable and so forth, so it was, because applicant was not interested, we just put those conditions in saying that they could. Thank you.
Did you, did you guys want them up to the mic and to say anything, or?
Yeah, they may want to address the trees, introduce yourselves.
Introduce yourself and name an address.
Yeah, Dave Carpenter, 6320 Lookout Trail.
Jennifer Doherty, his wife.
Just want to thank you all for having us here. This has been a lot more of a project than we had anticipated. It was, of course, precipitated by the report that we filed, which is the fact that we have this really long, pretty steep driveway, and we're getting older, and my wife is our snowplow, so she does all the shoveling, and there are times when that driveway just, I mean, I in fact have T-boned our neighbor who we share the driveway with, because it gets to be sheer ice, so, you know, we're just looking for a way to simplify it, and as we get older, give us a quicker, easier in-and-out, that's safer, that doesn't require as much, you know, shoveling in the winter, that's the real impetus behind our desire to put up a garage. In addition to that, I'm retiring soon, and I'm a bumbling novice woodworker, and I'd like to have a shop, and my wife wants a place to send me during the day, so, you know, this is, ties into our plans for that as well, so that's really, you know, we tried, and this is all my wife, we tried to design it so that it is consistent with a 1945 cottage style home that fits in well with the landscape, the architecture, that doesn't disrupt the neighbors in terms of being an eyesore. And we have letters here, or a letter, from our closest to the north neighbor, just saying that they're in full support, so, you know, we feel like we've tried to do the best we can based on, this is our first time ever building a garage, to check all the boxes, and, you know, we're happy to answer any questions, and if we have to change things, we're certainly open to that, we're not locked into anything, we're just trying to figure it all out as we go, I guess. We did, by the way, pay for the survey, Barry is finished, I think he's got a few more things to tweak, but he's been out of our yard, I mean.
Two months.
A lot, gotten to know Barry pretty well, and so it's, I think that survey is pretty close to prime time.
Preliminary, yeah.
I wanted to just add one thing about what precipitated the garage is also, we can only park one car in our existing little tuck-under, so it'd be nice to park both cars as we age and have them under a roof in the wintertime. And about the tree thing, our desire is to keep all of the pine trees that exist, we won't know until, you know, if Barry has the site plan, if there would be roots impacted on the big pine trees. We do have some landscape, little pom-pom lilac trees that, you know, are five to six feet tall, and some of those would need to be removed or moved.
Or relocated, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're tree huggers, so we want to minimize that.
So is the city arborist, so.
Oh, yeah.
So you said that you have a letter from the neighbor?
Yeah.
Is the letter, is the letter in our pack?
No.
No, he just gave it to us, so.
But we've talked to the neighbors, particularly the ones on the west of us, they're about 22 feet above us as the berm lies, so we've talked to them, because we wanted them to know that what they see now is what they'll see after a garage, it's not going to impact their view, and we've talked to, you know, immediate neighbors and talked to them. The neighbors that we do share our driveway with have been out of town, so we have not talked to them about, you know, we haven't shown them the plans, but for the most part, we've gone to around the neighborhood and shown them the plans.
I think when something like this comes up, the only thing that concerns me is the neighbors, how they feel about it and safety and traffic flow, those are the things that I get concerned about, so, yeah, yeah, you might want to speak to the neighbors who you share the driveway with.
Yes, for sure.
Because I can see lawyers in your future, if there's not happiness, maybe, I don't know, but.
Well, the benefit to the neighbor to the south side that share the driveway, the closest part to their space is their garage, so if the only window, if I believe is true, that they would be looking out of their house toward your space is the window in the garage.
In their garage.
So they're not going to visually see it until they drive up and down driveway.
Sure. Well, it's definitely, we're of the opinion that the garage is very pretty, and it's a very nice match to our house, and it's because we wanted it to have all the same nooks and crannies and architecture of the house, it's driving up the cost, but we really wanted it to look like, just timeless, like it's been there since the beginning of our house, so.
Any questions?
I don't have anything else, thanks for the background.
Yeah.
No, I have nothing. I think you've done a stellar job on it.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Except for his, so stellar.
It's, yeah, it's all been my way. Do you need this or want this, or?
I can, I'd love to take a look at it, if you don't mind, I can give it back.
Oh, is, there just one copy of that?
Yeah.
Oh.
I was thinking for the record.
Maybe somebody can get it back to them after it's copied into the record, but I imagine the council.
Have to get more tone, that's right. They got two bucks.
I think there's plenty of toner and blood a little bit.
It's the copier, new copier.
We can always take it to office, Max, and get copies made.
Do you need the letter back, or I could, we could email it to you, I mean.
They could scan it, and Julie could email it.
Yeah.
I'm sure, you know, they did it on a computer, I'm sure they did.
Well, we'll place this in the packet for the city council, so they have.
That's all I was thinking, the council probably don't want to see it.
Okay, good, thank you.
We need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. I move that the public hearing be closed.
All those in favor? All those in favor, sorry.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So is there any more discussion? Or is that it?
I think besides what Mr. Kramer mentioned, it is beautiful, it matches, it's within the property lines, they've done the community outreach to find out that if there's any potential differing opinions or issues or questions from the code standpoint, or for the conditional use permit of garage to finish square feet, like I kind of broke it down to the proper two garage, two-car garage aspect, that's only 600, so like if you think about your own spaces in your own yards, you might, sure, you might not have a dedicated workshop, you might have garden shed or an outbuilding or storage space, so like, when I break that apart for the different uses, given the unique nature of their space, they got two front yards, I'm not going to question, and I don't have an issue with configuration and going over that code number of total finished square feet, so I think they did it right, there's a rhyme and a reason, and they made it work within their unique lot lines, so.
Plus, the tuck-under is, sounds like is a garage in name only, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's probably the one, yeah. Well, I mean, we, the one up on the hill with the apartment complex, they had a huge garage put in, and can we say yea to yes to that and no to this, so.
And that's the thing, that they're not, they've consciously made the decision to bring it low enough to not impede the people further up the berm where neighbors around the corner have a big blue barn, and they totally wrecked that guy's view, and it got approved through this committee.
Yeah, exactly.
I wasn't there, I can't say that I was there, but it got, it had to go through here.
Well, the what, the roof line got changed all of a sudden?
Yeah, that too, so it's intelligently done, I think it's beautiful, you guys are doing all the right things, so.
And I think you're very respectful, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I move we pass it on with recommendation of approval to the city council.
Subject to the.
Subject to the conditions.
Of the, getting the.
Right.
Survey.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So this will go to the planning commission.
City council.
City council, sorry, city council, what's the date?
The May 28th?
Tuesday, the 28th.
May 28th, yeah.
Wow.
So Tuesday, May 28th is when the city council.
Do we need to be there for them?
No.
Probably is beneficial.
You can if you want to speak any background like you did today.
The council may have questions, so it's good.
You know, I have a preliminary survey that Barry got last night, but it's not official, it's not signed yet, do you want that, or would you rather have the official survey?
We'll wait for the official survey. If you say it's just going to be a few more days, that's fine.
He stamped it preliminary, so he hasn't finished all the calculations.
Okay.
He stamped it preliminary, so he hasn't finished all the recommendations.
Thank you, guys, you're welcome to hang out if you want to.
Is that an evening meeting on the 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And then we move on to new business. Recommendation for the commissioner appointments.
So if, what is that, the revised thing Julie sent out, that unless we say something, Blake and Jennifer are reappointed, or they just continue on for the second year, otherwise?
Well, the first one, she's got two actions. One is the recommendation, if you want to appoint Brandon to the planning commission.
Oh, we should probably read the agenda and see that he was first. Jumping ahead.
What was the?
Are we going to recommend Brandon or not?
And Commissioner Husbie to continue.
Yeah, you could do it all in one motion, in fact, yeah.
We just packaged it up all as one.
Our interview.
Yes, we can. I will get it if you want.
I think the only thing that came up for me, and I didn't say it in the interview, was, and I understand he's part of our community, was the, I felt a little conflict there with the fact that he works for MinDOT, and that there's been a history with MinDOT with trying to ram things through in our community, and so there's a little discord, so that was my concern. He's part of the community, so he wants to be a nice community too, but I always get a little niggel of doubt, so that was the only thing that came up.
The comment that I would make about that concern is that MinDOT's a big operation. And, you know, I was asking him how much planning experience he had with MinDOT, and the answer was none, he's in the survey division.
Okay.
I don't think the surveyors are doing anything but doing their surveys.
Sure.
So I don't see that, I mean, it'd be like somebody working for a great big company, oh, I know, I know somebody that works at that company, I'll find out what's going on. Like, well, he sweeps the floor, you know.
But I think with all of us on the planning commission, if a conflict, or if one of us thinks that there might be a conflict, I think we bring it up, and if Brandon were to notice one, we would expect his professionalism to say, I may have a conflict here, I'll, you know.
Absolutely, I mean, just even though we have MinDOT issues and things that come through, if it becomes his project, he can abstain. That's already happened multiple times with Blake, I think, is just, I'm just going to recuse myself, and then the rest of us can vote, so I think we'd uphold the same expectations.
That was my only concern that I wanted to bring up, so. Besides that, I think he's, he would be wonderful to be on the planning commission.
Yeah, I think with Tim leaving with surveying background and having another guy with that keen eye on surveying is going to be great. Survey well, has a background, I think the codes and everything, or you pick it up and you learn that as you go, so.
I don't think he's going to complain about the copies either, so that'd be a improvement.
He'll want it to be digital, he'll want us to have iPads.
That's what it should be.
Yeah.
Tim keeps us on our toes and we need to be, can't just, you know. So that's all I have to say about that.
So motion for?
I would make a motion, I'm going to break it up, because I'm already on one of the action items, but I'm going to make a motion to approve Brandon as the next seat.
A second.
And that's a recommendation to the city council.
To appoint him.
To appoint him.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, and goes to the city council on the 28th, I guess.
All right.
And if I remember right, don't they also get a chance to Q and A him at city council?
We just plan to bring this forward on consent agenda.
Oh.
Yeah, for the city council. The city council certainly respects the job that you all do and relies on you, so.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for showing interest.
So what, you're up next, Tyler? We have to vote for?
I, in the packet, you know, like I mentioned during our previous work session, that I'm, my first term is ending, and I would still love to be engaged as a community member and volunteer my time to keep doing this if you guys would so have me. So leave it up to you guys to discuss, I suppose.
I move we ask the council to reappoint.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye. And all abstain?
Conflict of interest, though.
Yeah.
Is that a conflict?
I don't know exactly how that works.
I thought you could vote for yourself, you could vote for yourself.
You could, but you abstained.
I passed.
So do we have to do anything with the annual meeting, elect a chair and vice chair?
You don't.
It doesn't require?
Unless you want to shake things up and make someone.
I think as long as Jennifer is comfortable filling in when Blake is gone for, it seems like the rare meetings we have, I'm fine.
If you're willing to put up with my fumbles, that's fine, whatever, whatever.
It's always slow in the wintertime, though, there's not a lot going on in the wintertime usually, so. Should heat up now.
We have some potential projects.
Yeah, all that vacant land? Yeah.
Hey, there's always up, so don't be so sassy.
So then I guess we don't need to make a motion to keep it as is, so.
Yeah. So on to old business, is there any old business? Informational upcoming meetings, there's the council meetings, oh, I have a meeting coming up, dang it, on May 28th, I guess I'll be there. So if you're going to be there, I'll be there.
All right.
At 6 o'clock. And then Commissioner Vandenberg will be at the June 25th meeting. And that's all.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, to passes.
You were quick on that one tonight.
And thank you to Commissioner Freeman for all his service here to the city.
I'm going to move, so you won't be able to find me.
Yeah.
No.